This conference will now be recorded.
I cannot join the meeting. They have. Let me do it. Alright, well, you have to do it on your phone. Ah, I hate this thing so much.
Are you fine, Alicia?
I am, you're recording.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear that. Okay, it is 5:30, we'll call the meeting to order. And Cheryl, thanks so much for sending the information out ahead of time so we'd have an opportunity to take a look at it and see where we're at. And maybe have a response for you. So, would you like to speak to the board about your situation?
I don't think I have to if I've, if everybody got the information I sent. I think that was pretty self-explanatory.
Did everyone on the board get the information?
Yes. But, but Norma, um, do we have a full quorum? Right now, I just see you and I.
I see, oh, I see Mike Bedore.
I'm here, Steve Bedore.
I see, I don't know, we've got.
Okay, well, as long, wait, as long as there's Norma, Steve, and myself for a sec, correct, Norma?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you log off again?
Who?
Okay, now, um, Terry Jones is on, right?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Well, um, Terry sent a nice note back to the board about his side of this issue that we have over on Web Street. Would you like to speak to it, please, Terry? And maybe we can get a better understanding of what's happening there.
I sure will. Hi Cheryl.
Hi Terry, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Um, I, I understand the issue that's going on. I spoke with, uh, I wasn't there when the guys went over to camera and I, you know, and I'm very sorry you're going through all this stuff. Um, but when they came back, we discussed, they seen at 12 feet out, which was inside the sidewalk, which would have been, uh, your side of the lateral, there was, there's some roots. And they believe that a lot of the debris, the sewage, toilet paper, whatnot, is catching on those roots. Now, on our side, which would be on this, on the sidewalk, yeah, between the sidewalk and curb, there is a sag or a belly. Um, and, and my experience, I mean, we've seen those kinds of issues in the past. And I'm more, I'm more prone to think that the sewer issue is more to do with those roots. I'm not sure if it's a clay tile line that you have, or if it's a cast iron line. Regardless, those roots have found their way inside your lateral. And when I had talked, spoken, I think I spoke with you a little bit, um, before the guys were down there, and I checked with them after I read your letter to the board. Um, and they did reiterate that there was definitely roots at around 12 feet outside the lateral. So, um, you know, in past experiences, I mean, it's hard to actually say where the problem lies, but my experience says that those roots are the cause of the problem. And what we wanted to do is get with your, your contractor, and I know this has been, you know, pricey for you, I understand, and I sympathize with you. Um, going forward is to work with your contractor. We were going to cut our section out where the belly or the, the sag is. And then while we're there, your contractor's there, we can all work together and get the new line in. And I was under the impression too, that you have a galvanized water line, which I assumed while everybody was there, we could address at the same time. I know that isn't really what this letter is about, but I just wanted to add that.
Well, I guess my problem right now is that when Hazelwood's were there both times, when they went through my side of the issue, brought that snake back in, there was no roots, there was no debris, there was no dirt. And I've been messing with this for three years. I mean, I, this is just half of the bills I've had from Hazelwood's. And I think my, my biggest problem is when, on February 2nd, when Hazelwood came in, they called the village and they looked and said, "No, it's not us, it's not us." And then, February 17th, I'm, I'm backed up again.
If Hazelwood called on February 2nd, I never received that call. I did not.
Who came?
Dustin came. The village truck was in front of my house, he picked up the manhole, he looked down it, and he said, "No, it's not us."
Alright, Dustin came.
Okay.
Well, that's the sewer department, so, um, you know. They, we run the camera, my DPW crew runs a camera, and I had Mark and Mike there, and like I said, um, I, I understand what you're saying, and, I mean, it's not up to me to decide to pay these bills, it's entirely up to the village board. All I can do is tell them what I saw on my side, and that's what we saw.
Okay.
If the village board decides that they want to pay for those bills, you know, that's up to the village board. Um, and that's basically all I can say. And I did write a letter, basically telling them that we addressed the issue. Um, what my guys told me, there was tree roots at the 12 feet, and a sag on our side, so.
Okay.
You know, it didn't cause any stoppage. Why, I don't know why Mike is saying that, or Hazelwood's crew is saying that there's nothing in the root, because we visually saw it on the, in the video. So, we actually did see roots. Mike had no way, Hazelwood's crew had no way to actually know if there was, because he doesn't own a camera. Dakota, or Coda Morrow was there, and he did witness it, according to my guys. So, I'm just repeating what my guys have said, of course, I wasn't there.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Well, I guess, you know, this falls in the hands of the board, and if they want to be, pay for half, or, or whatever they decide they want to do, that's entirely up to them and, and the sewer department.
Well, I'd even be happy if I could just get a couple of those last two bills, which I haven't even paid yet. I mean, at this point, I just, like I said, I've been, I've been dealing with this for a while, and I'm just, even, even Hazelwood's like, "We can't take any more of your money, this is ridiculous." And I agree, I need to get something done on my side, but this issue, well, you saw the letter, you saw the letter, so, but thank you, Terry.
Cheryl, I wasn't aware that you've been going through this for three years. This was just brought to my attention not too long ago.
Yeah.
I think early, mid, mid-winter is when I think I found out about it, and that's when my guys went down there.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, um, if I was uninformed, or didn't realize, or didn't know about it, I apologize, but I, to be honest with you, this was the first that I'd ever heard of it, uh, when my guys went down there.
Okay.
And this is the first time the board has heard of it as well.
Well, that's, go ahead, Norma, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
Well, that's only because after we, they came on the 2nd, and they came on the 17th, they're like, "Wait a minute, this is at the other end, this isn't your problem, this is what I'm saying." They've got the camera, this is what I've been told by Hazelwood's. Um, Andrew was there both times, Andrew Wood, he's my, my groundskeeper, I want to say. He's the man that takes care, you know, explains things to me. So, that's why you haven't heard from her, because I've been taking care of it, thinking it was my end. But apparently, it's not all on my end. That's all I'm saying.
From the note that we got from Terry, he thought that they had been in agreement of some sort with you, Cheryl, that together, we would go in at the same time and figure out what is wrong. Have you, and he thought that would be sometime the end of March, when the frost is out of the ground, and, uh, we can start doing those things. Would, we'll take a look at it at that point in time, and, uh, see what we come up with, and then take a review of these, um, outstanding bills that are here now, and see where we're at. What else, what would the board like to add?
Well, you still got a backup.
Pardon me?
Is there someone else on the board that would like to add to this?
Well, somebody said you should add backup, meaning what?
What is he saying, I don't understand what that means.
Well, I think that, this is Nancy Hyde, I think we need to get in there and look and see what the, the problem actually is. And if, if it turns out that it is the village's problem, I would have no problem in the reimbursement of the cost. I, from what I understand, we're kind of at a standstill as to where all the, for lack of a better word, responsibility lies, until we really open it up and look at it. Is that true, Terry? Is that what you're thinking?
That, that's accurate, and, and Cheryl, I'm gonna, as soon as this weather, I mean, if it stays nice, I'm gonna get down there as quick as I can to take, because I want, I want to make it right on our side anyway. I mean, I, I feel bad that you're going through it, I, I really do sympathize with you. And if it is on us, I'm sure the board will make it right. Um, if Mike can hold on, Mike Hazelwood can hold on for a couple of more weeks till we can get down there, or sooner, depending on, you know, what we find. Um, Mike's a fair guy, so I'm sure he'll work with you on that until we get to open that up and, uh, see exactly.
I understand. So, I guess, how do I, how do we schedule it, so that if, if you guys are doing it, I've got somebody there to do it? Do you coordinate that?
I don't. Um, the only thing I can do is I can leave the ditch open, so that your crew can come in and do what they've got to do. Um, I mean, I can give you a set date, as long as it's not snowing, but that's, that's where we run into problems, because I don't, we're still into March, and I don't want to tell you the day, and then your guys are there. And, uh, I mean, for all practical purposes, your guy, your people can go in there and do their thing. They're going, you're, you're owned to the, between the sidewalk and curb, that's where we take over, so.
Right.
Obviously, unless they can slide a line under the sidewalk, part of your sidewalk is obviously gonna have to get tore up anyway. I mean, we've done this many times, and there's, we've worked with the contractor, or the contractor goes first, and then we come in, or we go first, and the contractor comes in. I know it would be easier to do it all at the same time, that's all.
Okay.
You got, uh, if it's an old galvanized line, it's probably right beside the sewer too, right?
It is, and that's my main concern, because once that, once you scratch along that line, it's probably gonna start leaking.
You've probably got an old lead gooseneck.
No, I don't think so, Steve, that's on the list from 1982, when they read the water line, and that's a copper, um, it's a corporation stop with copper, copper to the curb stop, and then it's galvanized, it shows it on the print.
Now, would that have anything to do with my water pressure?
Absolutely. You're probably, you probably can't even see through that water line, Cheryl. When, when you get to that point, the guys will cut a section out and show you exactly. There, it's amazing how much rust is in there. I wouldn't even be surprised if it's leaking.
Alright, so, I guess we. Yeah, I don't know what to say either, I guess at this point, we need to do it, you know, so we can figure it out. Because I, Cheryl, I mean, I do a load of washing, I cringe, because I think something's gonna happen, right now. I mean, to live in the village of Clayton, and pay the water bills I pay, you know, I should be able to run the dishwasher and have flush my toilet at the same time, obviously. And I shouldn't have to worry about backing up my sewer, and, you know, every time I do something, so.
And it's no fault of yours, but over time, that house probably, you know, previous owners just never worried about those kinds of things. And now that you're the new owner, or been there for a while, you're noticing the perks of this place, somebody else dealt with it. I've, we've gone to places where there, we couldn't even imagine how they were surviving with such low water pressure.
Right, right.
So, we'll leave it that Terry will, uh, work with you, Cheryl, and, um, let him know if you get in there before we do, so they can coordinate getting done.
Okay, well, I, I don't think I'm gonna be getting in before you do, because I've got to come up with a contractor, somebody to do it, and I'll tell you, I called Box three months ago, and I haven't even heard from him. So, if you guys do it, get a chance to do it, Terry, just do it. And then I'll work on my end, you know, but I'd like to know when you do get down there, what, what, what you see, okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cheryl, would you give Terry your cellphone number, so he could get hold of you easily?
Sure, I can. Are you ready, Terry? Actually, Terry, I have your number, I'll just text it to you.
Okay, yeah, why don't you do that?
I have your number, you don't have mine.
Okay, yeah, just shoot me a text, and I'll get, I'll be in touch with you. Let's get, I want to get this resolved.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
My apologies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, um, Kevin Patnau, you're on the phone, right?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you. Now, um, executive order number 203, Kevin has been working on that to have a response for the state, on how, um, the police reform and reinvention is going to be for the village of Clayton. He's written a report, and he's, um, willing to listen to anyone that's on the phone tonight, with any comment that you'd like to have included in the report. So, if you wish to speak, would you give your name, please, and address the comments to Chief Patnau? And we'll, uh, write them down, and make sure they get included in the report that we'll be leaving in April. Is there anyone on the line that would like to, want to speak? We don't have anyone? Um, Kevin did a survey, put that out there, there were 25 responses to the survey, which was, uh, pretty good, because I was talking to some other localities, and they put a survey out, and only got two or three. So, I was pleased that we had 25 that participated in it. Does anyone on the board have anything for Kevin? Can we kind of do this executive order? No one on the board has anything for Kevin?
Here, I'd like to comment, Pete Parker from Clayton. Is Chief Patnau available?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Um, unfortunately, I don't know what was given out for, uh, your session to Reform and Reinvention. Um, has that been posted somewhere?
It will be, once we get the public comment center.
Oh, so, we're, we're not able to comment on, on anything, because we don't know what's there, though?
Well, I would be, I am, uh, going to be in my office on Thursday, Mr. Parker. If you would like to pick up a hard copy of our mission statement, and, uh, the police reform, uh, plan, I'd be more than happy to, uh, sit down with you and, and discuss it, and let, let you know how I arrived at what I arrived at, and I would certainly make that kind of time for you.
Um, the thought, the thought was that perhaps it would be something that could be posted on village website, so that, you know, would create a situation where we, where the taxpayers could have a chance to review and then make comments.
Actually, actually, it was posted on the website, uh, up until, uh, I believe, the beginning of February, when, when, uh, the survey, uh, came down. I believe that this came down also, that wasn't my intention to have this come down, but, uh, we could certainly get it back up there, and I'd be more than happy to, uh, discuss it with you, uh, in detail.
I'm, I, I think if it got posted, and we have a, if we knew it was posted, um, not all of us taxpayers have a chance to view the village board meetings all the time, so, I obviously missed it.
Right, yep.
If we could get it posted, uh, this week, or next, and then we've got a chance to, to comment, but other than that, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and, uh, my invitation, as you know, Pete is, it, it is always open, my door is always open to, uh, to, uh, you know, discuss ideas that the community has for our police department, and even if it isn't in this report that is going to the Department of Budget, I would certainly be happy to entertain any concerns or ideas that anyone has.
Kevin, can you put that back up on the webpage?
I can call, uh, I can call Chris.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can get that up, that is, that isn't a problem. It was up there, our, our mission statement, as well as our reinvention plan, was up there, and evidently, it was taken down when, uh, when we concluded our survey. And I just wanted to point out, um, it wasn't 20, 20-something people that took the survey, it was nearly 100 people, and 20-something, uh, offered comments.
Oh, okay, Kevin, thanks.
The rest of that, uh, that sample did not, uh, feel necessary, feel it necessary to offer comments, but we did receive, uh, you know, very close to 100 responses to that survey, and I was very, very pleased at the, uh, the feedback that we got.
Does anyone else have any questions for Kevin?
This is Alicia, I just wanted to let you know that your information on the mission statement, as well as the reinvention plan, are still available on your webpage on the website, so if they go to Department of Police, they should be able to find it there.
Okay, very good. Do you, did you hear that, Mr. Parker?
Yes, I, I heard that, and so, how does one go to that, Alicia?
At the village of Clayton, uh, website, there's a tab at the top that says Departments, and then an option for Police, and if you scroll down, you should see the information right on the webpage.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief Patnau, very much.
You're, you're very welcome. Thank you, Alicia, for bringing that to, uh, our attention. I'm, I'm kind of relieved that that's still on there.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the police chief?
Uh, yes, Steve Bedore. Uh, I, I've seen Kevin in action, uh, firsthand, uh, quell a family dispute, and I was amazed with the way he handled it. I, I probably should have wrote something, but I didn't. And I, I think he's fantastic with the way he handled it. Uh, that's all I can say about that, but I'm real happy with the job he does.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bedore. That's, uh, I don't expect any less of my officers than I expect from myself.
I mean, you were on duty at the time, that's, I'm not saying that you're better than anybody, but you did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
While we still have Kevin on the phone, does anyone have any questions on that police report that, uh, was in our package? Did you have any comments, Kevin, as long as you're with us here?
No, I do not, other than it was, uh, it was quite a learning experience for myself to, to kind of, you know, take a look at, uh, take a look at us from an outside eye, you know, uh, and, uh, develop this mission statement and plan, and I think that, uh, I think that every police department can benefit from that, from taking a look at themselves. And I think that possibly that was Governor Cuomo's intention, uh, when he crafted this executive order, was for us to take a, a real hard look at ourselves, and make sure that, uh, make sure that we're up to snout.
And I think the part that's kind of difficult from all of us, is that the same report is due from whether you've got two people in your department, or 500.
Well, that's correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, of course, the scope of that report will be small for smaller departments, and larger for larger departments.
Right.
And, and, you know, we, we've always, uh, prided ourselves that we try to keep up with all of the directives, all the latest, uh, law changes, so that we're not caught on our heels at any time. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that, and hence the, the brevity of, uh, of this, uh, whole thing.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us tonight, Kevin, and answered a lot of questions.
Well, it's a pleasure, and if anybody has any questions or comments, uh, about this or going forward, you know, my door is always open to both the board and the public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you. Uh, Terry Jones?
Hi, everybody, you all have a copy of my DPW activity report. Um, I, we did have a rather busy couple of weeks, we had several water leaks, and hopefully that's, uh, huh, put on the back burner for a while. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, not just my guys, and I know I omitted some people the last time, and I apologize, uh, Rob Stevenson from Dank, who was, uh, on the Kenny and Castle, uh, repair we did, um, he was instrumental in getting me some repair clamps after we had run out for fixing the first leak. And he was in constant communication with Department of Health for me, uh, through me, so, uh, he was kind of relaying the messages of what I was telling him, and, and keeping the ball rolling, so we, uh, we were able to get the water back on, and, and keep everybody that could have water with water. And also, uh, Star, Star Carter, who, as I said, uh, to Terry, I said that Star was a star, because, uh, she was instrumental in finding that leak that we had out on State Street and Beecher Street. She chased it down from, uh, uh, noticing that it was coming out of catch basins, because it wasn't surfacing, and, uh, her quick response saved, uh, a lot of water in that water tower from, uh, draining to a point where we were gonna be in some dire straits. So, definitely a shout out to both of those people for, uh, their, for their excellent work, and, um, again, Dank, very much appreciated. Again, our guys did a fantastic job. That one that we had on, on Wednesday on State Street, that was a tough one. That's one of the toughest ones that I've been on, and I've been here 27 and a half years, and, uh, that one, that was, that one got me. So, uh, the guys, the guys endured, took us three tries, but we finally got it fixed, and you can see by the picture, uh, it wasn't easy, it was on flat rock, and the sewer and water were right side by side, and, um, I wanted everybody to. I think that's all I have, if you have anything to add.
Terry, we had a discussion a couple more than a week or so ago about the pavers that have been taken out by the project. And Joe Crispin, you're on, would you, uh, address your questions to, uh, Terry that you had? You have some questions about it.
Say it again? Can you say that again, Norma?
Sure, well, you, we, I sent an email out regarding the pavers that are over at the job site, DOT site. And, um, over the weekend, you got back to me and said you had some questions you wanted to have addressed, and Terry's been involved in this, so I thought as long as Terry was here, you could address your questions, and we'll see if we can get them answered for you.
I got you, I'm sorry, my phone is acting up. Uh, yeah, Terry, uh, those pavers, um, what are they? There's, are they extra pavers from after the project, or?
No, they're the pavers that they had to take up, that people had put down. Remember Coyote Moon, uh, Hilda's, all down through there, and then the village had some down by Rotary Park. They're not pavers that match what they've got in here now, they're the ones that were in original ones. They've been taken up, and they're stored over at DOT.
I got you. Yeah, I wasn't sure, what pavers. Yeah, I wasn't sure what, what pavers they were talking about is all. Um, that's all I had on the pavers.
Yeah, they're not any of the new ones or anything. They're just the old pavers, and God knows what shape they're in, if they took them off. And people had the option to, um, have them take them over there because they didn't want them, or they could keep them. They'll be the same deal when we come up on James Street, because there's pavers over there. And any of them that have got a name on, those are set aside, so they can deal with those, or will be set aside.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it for the pavers.
Um, Terry, did anybody sign up for, uh, vaccination?
I've got two employees that have so far, yeah.
Because there were openings, uh, yesterday still on the Friday deal, and I bet they open it up to more people if they don't get the sixty-five and, uh, EMTs and those. So that's a lot easier to go to JCC than to Plats- or Procy.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions for Terry?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions for Terry.
Sure.
Uh, Terry, yes, I always have questions, Terry. Um, I guess, uh, the car downtown that we were having issues with, are you still having issues with it?
Um, there's still cars, but not those particular ones, Joe, but there, there are vehicles still parking down there. Um, I wrote some tickets last week. I, it's March, and, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to May. Um, so, I mean, the only time I'm going to write any tickets now is if it snows. Uh, I'm not going to chase them around, um, obviously, you know, it's, it, it's something that needs to be addressed. I don't know what the right answer, as Norma says, we've been dealing with it for years, and so I really don't know what we can do.
Uh, I, I brought this up last time, Norma. I guess, uh, we need to adopt something so Terry doesn't have to keep writing tickets. It's, it's getting to the point where it's ridiculous. Um, you shouldn't have to do that while he's trying to plow. Um, another thing, uh, there's no flag at the, at the flag pole at the building, the village office. Well, do we know why there isn't?
Because Bobby's not there anymore. I will make sure it's up. He always put it up and took it down every night. Um, so we're, we're not based out of there, so I'll have to, the police department, maybe Kevin, will take the flag down at night, um, because the light doesn't work, and I know it's supposed to be lit at night.
Right, right.
But there is the light there, right, Terry? Is there something that could be fixed?
It's solar light, but it doesn't work. It never worked right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I got, Terry.
Okay.
Anyone else got anything for Terry? Did you get your truck loaded yet? Is that this week?
Our truck?
Your new truck. You took the ladder in?
It, it, um, it's supposed to be lettered this week. He hasn't gotten back to me.
Oh, okay.
He's a busy guy.
Yeah, probably is. Okay, and well, so with Terry, thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Uh, Rob, you're on the phone, um, and you sent in something late this afternoon about this spill prevention plan that you wanted us to, um, get approved tonight. Could you give us a little, um, heads up on it so we can do that for you?
Yes, Norma. Uh, back in early January, uh, the New York State, the D.C. came out and did a chemical pollution inspection at the LS-1A pump station that's up street from, uh, Defense and Protection Facility. And they found five, by, minor violations, ranging from a valve that didn't have an opening closed on the valve, um, top, that's been replaced, stickers showing the flow within the pipe that they have been added, and then, um, the asset light stand in, the tank and piping in the SPR. So that, what was, has been added to the SPR. We could add, um, work through the SPR. I can attach that to the violation, the, submit that to the D.C., uh, I think we have another six days before we have to submit that.
So you've got the plan all ready to go. All you need is our blessing, right?
That is correct, yeah.
So would someone make a motion to approve the, uh, spill prevention plan that Rob has put together, so we can get that filed?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's over at the office, Rob. I'll sign it in the morning, okay?
Okay, very good. I don't know if Star has anything to add. Uh, you may want to ask her. Uh, she's been working really quite diligently on the new metering software, so she might have some input for you.
Um, Star, do you want to give the public a little update on the water billing, because they do, aren't going out until this week?
Yes, I will. Um, can you hear me okay? All right, I'm going to assume you can. Um, yes, so the village is going through an update to the water and sewer billing software, and also to the meter reading software. And this project has been going on for several months, but this billing cycle was the first cycle for the new billing software. And it took, you know, it came into effect. And, uh, when we printed the new bills this time around, they looked very different than the old bills. And it has to do with how the software takes in the reading from the meters. And so after going through the bills, I asked, um, Joanne to hold off on sending the bills until we can get some of the issues fixed on the back end. Um, so the bills are going out this week instead, and we have pushed back the due date by a week as well, so there isn't a rush that people have to get their bills in. Um, and I'm still working with the billing software, um, people to kind of get some things sorted out again on the back end. And I've also scheduled the second phase of this, where we're updating the meter reading software. And it looks like we're going to be having some training for staff on that in early April, which at that time, we're going to run another test of the entire meter reading and billing process, so that we have enough time to iron out any more little hiccups before the next billing cycle in June. If you do the roll, then that gives us to work out any issues.
Yeah, it was, uh, kind of challenging. Both the girls.
It's always challenging.
Separate ones all.
Oh, well, yes, and yeah, and Joanne had to put in some extra work there to get the new bills in, and I do appreciate her help. And, um, it's always challenging when you are moving from one piece of software to another piece of software, and the two aren't the same. And so, you know, it definitely, it's taking some finagling on the back end just to make sure everything's reading right. So, um, I'm still working on it, and, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll run another test in April, so we have plenty of time to get things sorted out.
Okay, thanks for, uh, that update, Star. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Rob or for Star? If not, I think we're all set, uh, from the wastewater department.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks for all your help. Okay, uh, we have a consent agenda in front of us here. Does anyone have any questions on items one, two, three, and four? If not, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for those first four items?
I'll make that motion for items.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And that was Steve?
Joe.
Joe, okay, thank you, Joe. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those are taken care of. On the capto projects, are there any, uh, questions on item five? If not, can we have a motion to approve item five?
I'll make the motion.
Thank, thank you. Do I have a second? I need a second. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Is that Jeremy? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, we're all set there, thank you. Um, Joanne, do you have the information on the, uh, watercraft inspection? Uh, this was something that Terry has always, um, been involved in, and they're asking to come here again this, uh, spring and do the watercraft inspection. We've always let them do it, courtesy to the public, and, uh, we've got the place for them to pull in and do it. It was in your, uh, meeting package. Did anybody on the board have any question? Okay, so, um, we'll, I'll get back to them tomorrow, Joanne. I don't think we need a motion or anything, just to let them know that they can, uh, attend to that.
Okay, sounds good.
And the support letter, we do one just about every year for Neighbors of Water Town. That was also in your package, so that they can, uh, continue to get grants and try to do some, uh, improvements for the homeowners in Jefferson County. Um, let's have a motion on that, because there is a letter that's got to go out and be signed. So if somebody would make that motion, I'll sign the letter.
I'll make the motion.
I'm hoping they have the letter.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, under the old business last board meeting we put out there, um, we got to figure out what we want to do downtown about parking. Does anyone have any, um, suggestions or comments, or what do you want to do? Nancy, you did a lot of work on your tool going. Do you have any input that you want to share now?
Well, I, I, I would love to see us have the kiosk system, but from a cost perspective, I believe that we can't do it now. So I, I think we're going to have to stick with the meters at this particular point, but maybe put a timeframe on it to work towards the, the kiosks. Um, and I think through the kiosk system, it would keep traffic moving, uh, better. There are just an awful lot of advantages to the kiosk, but I also know that purchasing kiosks are seven to ten thousand a piece, and then the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So it's something that I think we're going to have to plan for in our budget for the next, over the next few years.
I, um, did a little research, and Thomas, um, he's had some information that he had done for someone else. And somehow, and I think with the people you worked with too, Nancy, they seem to think we needed ten, which seems like a lot. And if you had ten down there, it would be five hundred dollars a month just for the service of them. That's a big chunk of change. You're, and they're only good for us for six months. Rest of the year, we, um, don't really need them. So I don't, I think we got to do some homework on it. And, and they're all set up. We can put the meters in, the, uh, post, uh, can be put in. And Kevin and, excuse me, Terry thought that we should paint the post black. That would look better if we, um...
I thought that was a great idea, yeah, that that would blend in with, um, all of the other.
Yeah, with the lamps and everything.
Yeah, the other things. I thought that was a great idea.
I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to put those in this year. We'll have to see where they end up, uh, with Project Downtown, whether they are, but, if they're under construction places, it's going to be hard enough to get people to park any place without having to deal with a meter. So we'll work on the, on the snow removal part of it, uh, line. Um, the information that we have for snow removal now is thirty-five years old, and it doesn't work. I think the big hangup in that code is what is, there's twenty-four hours after the event. Who, who makes that call? When does the event begin? When does the event end? So I would like to, uh, get some new language out there and amend the law that we have and, um, see if we can't be better prepared for snow removal next year. And if we have, we'll have to have a public hearing on it. It'll give the public an opportunity to come, and they complain about people not doing the sidewalks, so it'd be an opportunity for them to express ways that we can get the message out to them. Personally, I think twenty-four hours is too long, but, um, we got to come up with a better plan. So could I get Joe to wrestle to come up with a law that we could amend the, uh, one that we have now, so we could have a public hearing?
Yeah, that sounds great. Uh, the quicker we get it done, um, I know it's going to be a little work, but, you know, if we could hand out a flyer to all the residents for all this, I know it seems like a lot of work, but a lot of these people weren't here all year, and that's where we're running into a lot of problems.
Well, yeah, and before they go away, they, and another thing that came up this year, there was, you know, not snow, but the sidewalks were icy, so we should include snow and ice in the new update. But it would be, uh, I'll get Joe to, uh, come up with a law. Anything else you'd like to put in there? Unless we have a public hearing, we can get some input from them and find out how we can get a handle on this.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, anyone else got any, uh, information they want to make sure that gets included in it in the first round?
Definitely icy sidewalks. Uh, uh, one that I take care of between the, um, uh, the Masan- uh, the bank and the, uh, Masonic Hall, um, I could see where, in the snow, a little bit of snow, I could see where, uh, people slipped and fell, and, uh, they didn't have any idea that there was ice under the, uh, snow.
Yeah.
But I think that's pretty important.
Okay, well, we'll get, um, something with that. Another thing, Humbert, we're talking about parking. Is there any interest in investigating having a charging station, any place downtown? The hotel at one time, they talked about putting one in. I don't know if they've done anything more about that or not, but, uh, might be something that we'll want to have eventually. Alicia, on this code of ethics that you...
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, and I, I don't know if it's my phone, but I can't, I can't hear you well, Norma, and nor can I hear Joe or Steve Bedore when they spoke. So I don't know if there's a problem with the audio, or if it's just me. So I apologize if it's just me. But I, I don't understand what you guys are saying at all.
Well...
Yeah, I was having issues. Uh, I had to log off and log back on.
There's quite a bit of feedback, uh, because there's a number of people that aren't muted.
Well, I think there are a lot of people on, and everybody's got their mic on. And if you're not talking, isn't it better? And if you're not talking, isn't it better that they turn their mic off? Okay, Alicia.
I would like to see the village, um, use Savvy Citizen more often. Because it is a, a service that we have. And at least after every snowfall, send out the alert, take care of your sidewalks, make sure to put the ice down. I agree a hundred percent with everything that is, is being said about the ice, but if we cannot get them to shovel, I don't know how we're gonna get people to put salt down. So one way might just be to constantly put it out there on Savvy Citizen. It's just another, is a thought for communication.
Another vehicle, get the information. I wonder how many local people use Savvy Citizen. I don't know if there's any way to track that or not, because there's about six hundred people that have signed into it. But I kinda think a lot of them might be, um, away from here. I don't know. Okay, on to the, uh, code of ethics that was introduced last, um, week. And it was in your package. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to change or talk about? Nancy and I worked on it with Alicia when we were meeting on Friday mornings. Just part of the package we're trying to wrap up. If, um, no one wants to add, delete, or do anything to us, uh, can we have a motion to accept the code of ethics as it's been presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Nancy. Do we have a second? I need a second on the.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. How, anyone have any questions about it? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So we can get that to you, to Alicia, so that, um, can have that information, kinda wrap up their projects. Um, last week, we had a meeting with Bart Leonard Judas about the bridge, New York grant that's out there. And we applied for it, uh, about two years ago and got denied, but because we were replying recently, I had to make some temporary repairs. Um, I think we have a better chance at it. It is, um, between a million and a half and two million would be the price tag on it. And five percent of that is the responsibility of the village. It would have a seventy-five year lifespan and the difference in the price will make how they design it for the temporary bypass option. They're trying to figure out to make it as least inconvenient as it can while they're doing the project. So they're working on that. And, um, it's due, the bid is, uh, the, um, grant is due on May fifth and it'll be awarded in September. So we should have some kind of an idea how, um, we make out on that. Oh, the hundred and fiftieth celebration that, um, people have gotten, talking about and getting interested in. Um, I got, um, kind of a boilerplate, uh, proclamation and I've got some information together that would identify what we're trying to do. And the chamber has been really helpful and, uh, the historian is really into this, uh, project. So this week, if I can get this proclamation in a draft form, I'd like to send it out to all the board members and have you put your input in it, how you'd like it to read, what we need more or less of. So we could, um, put it out there at the next board meeting and get this in going. Does that sound like a plan? Cause if we got people that are interested in doing it and wanna see it happen, we got a problem. I did the N I C O M roundtable conference one day last week and there were thirty-six people that participated, which was great. Uh, I think having, um, virtual meetings gets more people together in some of these events. The big question was, uh, the stimulus bill that was passed, sixty-five billion, that's gonna be divided up among towns and villages that, um, that hopefully the money does not go to the state. It'll go directly to the village. I don't know what it'll be amount wise. Cause we don't want the state to get their hands on the money and peel off the top what they want. So, um, N I C O M has got a really great, uh, group that works really well. They were pleased with the, uh, input they got from Senator Schumer on this. So, um, I think we'll hear in the next, uh, within the month, but, uh, you'll get for money. And I can't believe that, uh, sixty-five billion sounds like a lot, but there's a lot of people out there that are looking for the money. So, um, we'll keep you posted on that. And, um, I'm, the summer youth program, did you put that on the webpage, Joanne?
Yeah.
That is on the webpage? Okay. So, well, because, you know, starting to take applications on it, there might be some opportunities for some local, um, people to get involved in that. And Friday, I got a email from Save the River and they're looking for support for, uh, protection of, uh, the Great Lakes. And it's not a hard copy letter that they want now. It's online. It's all set to go. You just gotta say yes and no and that you would support it. So can I complete that, uh, form and get it back to Save the River? To support, uh, and protect the river and the Great Lakes?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
That, that sounds good.
Okay. And I sent you out the January financials to the, um, board and to department heads. Did everybody get those? Cause it might be helpful while we, uh, meet on this Friday for the budget. Nine o'clock Friday. So we gotta get that going. Hopefully we'll have something from, uh, E F P R before Friday to kinda get a head wrapped around it so we can ask some questions and figure out how we're gonna put this together. Has anyone in the village noticed some ice sculptures being come around here? There were two down on John Street and we had a little fall, so I think those are gone because a nice one up at Lyons Field. And the people that were doing it, uh, put a package up at the village office, which I picked up yesterday. And, um, I'll scan it and send it to you on how they would like to see the community get involved with, uh, this ice sculpture thing. I don't know much about it and I'll see if I can find out a little bit more and send you, I'll have Joanne scan the information to you and we can see how, um, we can respond to their, um, letter that they sent. There were several pages of information that they sent. So, does anyone on the board have anything they wanna share with us that's been going on?
Uh, I just have a couple of questions is all. Um, I know I was appointed, uh, liaison, I guess, for foil requests. And, uh, I'm heading that up. Um, I got a meeting with Joanne tomorrow. Um, there's a couple of things. There was a nice article in the Alex Bay about Alex Bay and the T I Sun about, uh, oversight and, uh, different responsibilities and stuff. I think every board member should read that. It, it's a pretty good read. Um, also, what is the status on the lyric? Have we had heard anything back on it?
That's a legal issue. Remember, she had a lawyer. It says at the bottom here, we're gonna have an executive session tonight.
Okay, I didn't know that it was including that. And also, um, when the auditor come, did they get a, did we get a letter of the scope of the audit?
We have, he's not there.
No, 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 no. Their initial letter, when we, uh, were getting audited, did they give us a letter, a cover letter of the scope of the audit?
Oh, that was quite a while ago. We had a. I can look and see, I don't think there's anything in writing. I'm.
Cause usually an auditor will come in.
Hadn't seen or heard tell of him in a month. And I sent him a text message one day late last week and he got right back to me and said that he has more than our audit to do. And, uh, he'd been, all, all the auditors had been pulled off to do a special project for the controller. He didn't say what the special project was, but in the paper, uh, Saturday night's paper, there was, um, an article about, uh, open meeting laws that they had been checking into in Albany. And they scored everybody on how they were participating in open meetings. And there were two in the north country that failed. They got, her name wasn't on there. So I wondered if that's what he'd been doing. I don't know. I haven't, have you heard from him at all, Joanne?
No, I have not.
No, he said it's been about a month since he'd even taken a look at anything for, uh, Clayton. I'd have a question what they wanna do. I mean, we just have to cooperate with them.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but usually when an audit takes place, they give you a letter saying this is what they're looking into. Now, that doesn't mean it's not gonna snake off in another direction. But usually they give you a covered letter.
He, it was from two thousand nineteen. That's where he was going from two thousand, June of two thousand nineteen forward. He gave us dates that they were working on. But that was about all he gave us. I honestly, I don't think we had a letter from him. I'll check with him.
Didn't receive a letter. We received an email. And it was generic.
We had an email that said he was gonna come. And started on it, but I don't think he had any scope on it. I'm gonna look it up.
It just provided the period.
Thank you, Alicia.
I'll see if I can find out for you, Joe. Anything else? Okay, um, if not, can we have a motion to go into executive session? And Alicia, how are we gonna do this?
Uh, once you close the meeting, uh, just don't start your discussion until you get the okay from me. I'll make sure everybody's out.
Okay, alright, thank you.
We need a, we need a.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.